Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight for the February 27th, 2024 city council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and discussions made by the city council in accordance to open meeting law. Since this meeting was posted as its own meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio, and it will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council will be by roll call. Vote. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request speak. If you are watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during this remote meeting of the city council in a quorum as present, the meeting may continue after matters have been made to reestablish a link. The minutes shall note the interruption. Non-discrimination statement, open for the city meetings, read as follows. It is defined in the city council that no individuals shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual or developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender, identity, or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. At this time, I'd like to announce that we have Ward Two Councillor Dylan Benson, we have Ward Four Councillor Frank Majota, we have our clerk Joanne Sanos, we have myself, Sean, Ward Five Councillor, we have Councillor-at-Large Val Gilman, we have Councillor-at-Large Jason Groh, we have Ward Two Councillor Marjorie Grace, Three, and we have Councillor-at-Large Jeff Worthley, and we have Councillor One Scott Memhard. We also do have in the audience, we have the acting mayor, Tony Gross, and I'd like to recognize Ethan Forman from the Gloucester Times as well. And Kenny Costa, our auditor, and we have Jill Cahill, our CAO and Greg Catamatory, Planning Director. But that's what it said.
Oh, okay. So it's not by roll call vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So with that being said, I think we have gone through the list. And at this time, we have a flag salute, which will be led by Councillor Groh, and then we have a moment of silence from Dylan Benson, Council Benson.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Council Benson, the floor goes.
Thank you. I would offer a moment of silence for the two-year anniversary for the people of Ukraine as they're continuing to deal with a brutal war, and also a moment of silence for all the victims of Putin's brutality. Thank you.
So next up, we have oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not apparent on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature to city business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate, and the city council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and Jason Groh, Councillor Groh, will be doing the time tonight. So I'd like to ask if there's anybody who'd like to speak under oral communications tonight. And just as a reminder, our timekeeper will give a reminder at 2:50. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Altona Bertikewa, 33 Middle Street, Gloucester. First of all, I would like to thank Councillor Val Gilman for encouraging Gloucester residents to speak at the oral communications part of the last city council meeting and holding a vote in it. That meeting was scheduled for 5:30 PM and caused a lot of confusion, it seems, for many Gloucester residents since the regularly scheduled time for city council meetings is usually at 6:30 PM. We request that city council president to account for the confusion it caused and not to take away the residents' voices as part of the oral communications if this situation repeats again. And this is my speech for today's oral communications. The other day, my husband and I received an anonymous letter aimed at intimidating me and my husband. The letter had no return address or identity of the person who sent it. We cannot talk about what was in the letter because it's being looked at by the law enforcement. But the letter refers to my husband and I objecting to the state of developments in Gloucester. Specifically, we have spoken numerous times at city council meetings about how we were completely blindsided by the approval process of the 20 Main Street project specifically, informed about the ZBA and HDC meetings on that project. We also spoke about preservation of the historical district where our properties located. I don't know how much time I've got left now.
You're fine.
Okay. Thank you. We also spoke about the preservation of the historical district where our property is located. We and other Gloucester residents expressed many concerns regarding the impact of the 20 Main Street project on the butters and the neighborhood. And quite a few people engaged us in helping us and share many of their concerns. The person who sent that anonymous letter knew exactly what they were doing. They wanted to intimidate and silence us, given that we have been outspoken and exercised our right to free speech, protected by the U.S. Constitution and Massachusetts laws. As property owners in Gloucester, we also have a right to express our concerns and be part of any decision-making and approval of developments that impact us. And we have all the right in the world to object to any development or anything that we don't like. We reported that anonymous letter to the proper authorities. We want to emphasize that sending a threatening or intimidating letter via a postal service is a serious federal crime under Title 18 U.S. Code 876. An individual committing this crime shall be fined, imprisoned for two years or both. My husband and I will not be silenced or intimidated, and we will not tolerate any harassment, intimidation, or threats from anybody. To the person who sent the letter, you will be publicly exposed once we find out who you are, and we will make sure that you'll be held accountable. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, and I'm very sorry that you had to go through this. And please keep us informed of how it may work.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Johnson. I'm also a resident at 33 Middle Street here in Gloucester. And as my wife mentioned, we will not be silenced or intimidated, and we want to ask the Gloucester City Council and Mayor Greg Verga to ensure that no threats, harassment, or intimidation are tolerated in Gloucester for speaking up against any development or any other subject. Any form of harassment, intimidation, and threats, whether it's via mail, social media, or public meetings, should not be tolerated. This includes purposely releasing personal information online to discredit or belittle community members with different opinions or to invalidate opposing statements. I know that I, as a public servant myself, would get in trouble if I put out offensive comments or put likes on denigrating social media posts, as we have seen certain appointed members in various Gloucester boards and commissions do online. Please call out that behavior anytime you see it, because we are reaching a tipping point of hostility in this city. And there's a lot of, sometimes, especially on social media, culture of fear and intimidation here in Gloucester, and there's widespread online harassment sometimes, some of which my wife and I have experienced from some community members who are equally, so have equal opportunity pro development, no matter what project it is, including some members of the Housing for All special interest group. It's unacceptable for this behavior to take place, and it's enough. We are entitled to free speech and are protected by state and federal laws. And most important with all this, we expect civil discussion, objective, and impartial decision-making by all commissions and boards in Gloucester, including the city council. Anything short of that will cause more division, hostility in our small community. Anyone appointed to the city council and also other civil servants, you serve me, my wife, and other butters and residents in Gloucester as much as you serve anyone else in the city or any small interest group. So I will ask you, as city council member, to do your part to raise the bar for civil conversation, whether it takes place online or in person. Basically, if you see or hear anything, I want you as the city councilman, representative of the people of Gloucester, to note that and object to any kind of behavior that you find that is inappropriate. And that's all I have to say, and thank you for my consideration.
Thank you, and have a great night.
Good evening, Barnaby Prandagar, 61 Fernald Street, West Gloucester. I'd just like to share an idea from a gentleman called Don Shoup and his book called The High Cost of Free Parking. We all know that at the very busiest of times, there can be issues in Gloucester finding convenient parking spots. Although there's usually parking to be had somewhere, some visitors sometimes struggle to find it. The suggestion from Professor Shoup would no doubt be complicated to implement, but it's fairly simple to describe. The elevator pitch of this idea is as follows. We need more housing, and we're likely to see some downtown growth. Private parking attached to homes and businesses comes at great cost in terms of land use. All of those driveways and parking lots might better be purposed as places for people to live rather than store private vehicles. And having tied parking to commerce that only operates during particular hours and is vacant the rest of the time is a very inefficient land use, and as I suggested, land is a very expensive commodity. So the potential solution suggested by Professor Shoup would be to recognize the need for structured parking. Finding a site obviously would be a challenge, but before even that, a sensible and efficient way to fund any such building is essential. Shoup suggests that instead of requiring surface parking for new or commercial residential construction attached to private property interests, we charge an administration fee or payment in lieu and put that money towards the cost of building structured parking. This might itself be subsidized parking for residents of the new construction, but market rate parking to anyone else. Funds collected could be split between maintenance and upkeep of the parking or servicing any debt used to construct it, or set aside for improvements in the downtown area, the city, bike lanes, trees, public restrooms. There's no shortage of places where the money could go. Although I recognize that the in-new fee would have to be significant, builders would be able to recoup from the extra living space they get to sell, homeowners would benefit for the same reason, and the public benefits from increased subsidized parking. There's revenue from parking charges and hopefully less cruising traffic searching for a spot to park in. If it is possible to get through all of the regulatory issues, such a system would probably require a reexamination of how we charge for some other parking downtown, but this could present a partial solution to some of the parking headaches. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
How you doing tonight, Carol?
Thank you. I live at 6 Hancock Street, and that is right across the street from the YMCA Meaning Housing Project. And I'm here to just share some of my experience from the last year. Before the project began, the superintendent from Windover, Bill Young, and Pete Avalia from the YMCA came and met with myself and my neighbor. They gave us an overview of the project. They listened to our concerns, and they answered our questions. One of the things I asked for was for a schedule, so I could keep abreast of the traffic and noise outside of my house. And every week, I am emailed a schedule, a weekly schedule and a three-week-out schedule. And all of the activity that is involved in the construction that blocks or closes down Hancock Street is all listed in red, so it's really easy to find that information. And then if there are changes to that schedule, an email is sent out. And then some of my neighbors heard that this schedule was available, and Jamie McGrath from the Y collected the email addresses, and Bill sends those people the schedule as well. Now, recently, the construction has lost some days to weather, so that means that their weekdays are a little bit longer, and they're working on Saturdays. Understanding what added stress this is to the neighbors, the superintendent Bill works to make sure that the time that they're there is 4:00, 4:30 on a weekday, and then 3:00 on a Saturday, which is, I'm grateful for. And when I need to get in and out of my driveway, when there's trucks and deliveries and so forth on the street, I just text the superintendent, Bill, and he either alerts the policeman on duty or his assistant, and I can get in and out of my driveway very easily, with very little delay, I should say. I wanted to give you just a quick example of when the neighborhood came with a little bit larger problem. The contractor trucks and the compressors were all out on the street, and they were idling, and the diesel smell was ridiculous. And one of my neighbors called, sent an email complaining, and then I got a text from Jamie at the Y, and within inside of an hour, there was a meeting. And Jamie was there, and Peter was there, myself, my neighbor. The project executive for Windover came up from
10 seconds.
The contractor, and it was all, you know, worked out amiably. And I don't, it is a hardship living with all of this.
All right. Thank you. Your time is up. If you could send that back into paper to the mayor, they can get back to you on that. But your time is up tonight. Thank you. And we do have one person else on the call. Julie Steiner. How you doing, Judy?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. 29 Addison Street, Apartment 2R. And I know I brought this up before, but I still have not received anything from the mayor on this as far as the need. I mean, Gloucester, at least Ward Two, deserves a parking study, a traffic study, and emergency response. I think there's one other, but I can't remember it. As you know, Main Street jumps into an extremely confusing traffic pattern where there's no guidance for it. So you have Main Street, Washington Street, Rogers Street, Angle Street, and I think you know the other two others, but I can't think of them off the top of my head. So adding more residences to Main Street, in particular, we're talking about 20 Main Street, there'll be another one coming up later, I understand, further up where the bank was, is adding more traffic to Main Street. I understand that there's going to be parking for 20 Main. However, there's only one unit, one parking spot per unit, and most of us have more than one vehicle. So there's no parking as it is. Rogers Street is full. St. Peter's Square is full. There are people that live down or walk down the street with CMGI and I can't think of the name of the, Gortons, I'm sorry. And they can't find parking, even on their own street. So the biggest concern actually is when you add this congestion, emergency response is near possible, near impossible. I'd like to see something from the Fire Department and the Police Department as far as their ability to respond to an emergency, given this extra congestion on Main Street. The traffic pattern doesn't make things worse or doesn't make things better. I'm surprised that no one's gotten hurt yet, or maybe they have, and I haven't heard about it. Let me see, is there something else before we go? Again, these are concerns for Ward Two. Everything's going into Ward Two. Ward Two is saturated, and so we don't have the parking, and my biggest concern is that congestion on Main Street that's going to impede emergency response. This is not the first time I brought it up. I believe this is the fourth time I brought it up.
10 seconds.
And I still have yet to hear from the mayor.
All right. Thank you for your time. The mayor will be notified of this, and hopefully he'll get back to you. Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak under oral communications at this time? Yeah, come on up to the mic, though. Yeah, introduce yourself and give us your name and address.
I'm Alexandra. I live at 14 Sawyer Ave in Lanesville. And it's that time of year again. We all went to our mailboxes, and there was all the cheering communication. We got our excise tax, we got our dog license. Why can't we get our beach sticker application right there? You know where we are. You know we have cars. It's so archaic. I love coming down here, but sometimes it's just not realistic. And then both my cars are 90s cars. I love my 90s cars. The mechanics are so busy. My car spent so much time with the mechanic last year. I didn't know the plate number. The registration was down at the mechanic. I couldn't even do it online. I got a ticket at Plum Cove, which is like in front of my house, and they wouldn't let it go, and then it went up to $100, and then I wasn't getting my license. I feel like the citizens, with all the rent increases, we're struggling enough. You know where we are. You know where our cars are and our dogs and everything else. Can the city just put the application in there with the excise tax? I would really appreciate that. I think just cut the citizens a little bit of slack. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, could we have the speaker's last name? Alexandra? Thank you.
All right. Anybody else like to speak under oral communications? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, the next order of business.
Next order of business is a presentation, comprehensive plan update from Elena Zabar of JM Goldson regarding Phase Two outreach results and upcoming outreach public visioning workshop.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Good evening, councilors. Greg Catamatory, Planning Director. We thought this was a good opportunity to update the council on where we are with the process of the comprehensive plan. There have been regular updates, and if anybody is interested where things are in the process, we've been typically having updates at the planning board, but also wanted to take this opportunity to have a brief presentation from Alana Zabar from JM Goldson, who's our consultant that's working on this, to speak to the success of the first outreach effort and also what comes ahead. And also to clarify a couple of things, you may have received some information about the summary of that outreach and some of the statistics in that document, and so have Alana here this evening to kind of give you a little bit of background on the ACES report, as we call it, and again, what's coming forward. So I'll hand it off to Alana.
Thank you, Greg.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm wondering if I might have the ability to share my screen?
Of course.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Can we bring the sound down just a little bit?
Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. All righty. As Greg mentioned, my name is Alana Zabar. I work for JM Goldson. As you know, we are the consulting company that is helping Gloucester with your comprehensive plan. As Greg noted, the engagement has been so successful so far in this process. We have seen just under 3,000 participation points, and we're only halfway through Phase Two. This is such a great achievement and such a testament to the effort that the city has put into reaching the community. I say casually, you know, you've reached 101% of your goal for the entire project, and so perhaps it's time for us to take a look at that goal and bump it up a little bit. But it has been so wonderful to see how much the city has put into getting the word out about our engagement and making sure that it's a priority that community members are participating. So when we talk about engagement, I want to be clear about what the purpose of engagement is, and it really is to start these conversations, but we're not making decisions yet, right? This is something that allows us to get a better sense of what the community is thinking about, but it's not necessarily meant to be statistically significant and say, this is what's going to happen next, right? We have the next two phases of the plan to work through those pieces. And so you had such successful engagement, and we are going to build on that. Your most successful tools, you know, your community survey, which received about 1,600 responses, and your meeting in a box, which was so successful, saw a great variety of community members, from your students to your housing authority residents, seeing over 500 participants in that process as well. You have put such great effort in, and we want to incorporate the ideas that your community has shared with us. But I wanted to take this time to explain a little bit further what these tools are and how we use them. I think that will shed a little clarity to the community and for you all as councilors as well. And so we had, as we mentioned, a few different tools. We had our community survey, which really helps us identify what the community feels are the strengths and weaknesses of the community and the city itself. This helps us understand This helps us understand what are you doing really well that we need to highlight and continue doing? And where is there room for improvement? When we look at our meeting in a box, this is a tool that helps the community members start to dream about what the future might look like in the city. That's why we had different activities that let folks talk about specific topics and what they'd like to see in those places. Our crowd map, which allowed people to put a point on the map and say, here's what I'd like to see here. But it's more than just telling us what would you like to see in a specific location? We know that might not always be possible, right? There are lots of things that go into picking a site for something. But understanding really what the community wants to see. When we see a number of people suggest that they're interested in a topic. It's up to the community to figure out, is that a good idea for the for you and where would that go? And as I mentioned, your survey was so successful, seeing your greatest engagement. And then your meeting in a box and then your crowd map. And so when we look at numbers and results of these tools, we want to put that into perspective as well. And so if there are ideas that people had that maybe you don't agree with, that was the purpose of this process is to start having these conversations. And so why we put things into this summary document, as Greg mentioned, we call this ACES. Um, I'll share with you plainly, I write aggregated community engagement summary over and over again, which is where the acronym comes from. And I think it's just a fun way to to reference it, but. Really, the the point of this is to condense these thousands of submissions that we received. And these ideas into a readable document so that you all don't have to go and read each individual topic and idea you can. We give that information. We want to be as transparent as possible. There's the whole appendix that has a transcription of every single comment and every single submission that we've received. But we know it's unrealistic that folks will be able to go through it like that. And so that's why we create this. And it really just helps communicate what your community is thinking about, but it's not a policy document. Our summary is just that. It's the summary of the comments that we've received. It's the great ideas. The ideas that might not make sense for Gloucester and everything in between. There's no sort of consultant or, you know, policymaking oversight. There's no response to ACES. It's just the summary. And we make it into something that makes sense for people. And we're just in the middle of Phase 2 of four phases. So we can't write the entire plan based on this engagement. Which is why our process is specifically designed to offer multiple engagement opportunities throughout the process. Now that we've launched ACES a few weeks ago, we've encouraged folks to read that and then start looking at. Right now we have our vision drafting questionnaire open. Right now we are in Phase 2, as I mentioned, and the major deliverable of Phase 2 is creating. This vision and goals for your community. What does Gloucester look like in 10 years? And now most consultant teams and comprehensive plan processes, they write this first draft and then they give it to the community and say. Here's what we think you should be in 10 years, but our team doesn't believe in that process. We know that we could never write. A vision for your city that would compare to anything you might write yourself. So we facilitate this process that puts you in the driving seat. You get to say, here's what we want to see. This questionnaire that we have launched right now, which you can find on our website. If you go to our website, which you can easily find at tinyurl.com slash GCP2034. There's a pop-up window that comes up the second you open that website with a link to the questionnaire. It's also. Right on the homepage, there's a big window that looks like the right image on this slide. Um, it's also on our get involved pages. We've been sending it out through our email newsletter. It's been on social media. We're hoping folks can help share the word as well. Right now, this is open until end of day Sunday. This helps us start to generate a word bank that we're going to use on our March 9th. In-person public workshop. Where people are going to start taking pen to paper and writing the vision. And so if you aren't able to join us on the 9th, we highly, highly, highly encourage you to submit the questionnaire. That will help make sure that your voice continues to be heard throughout this process. So as we look at what happens next, I want to again emphasize the process that's already happened. So Phase 2 started in September when we were beginning to design our engagement process. And as you know, we had. A three-month-long engagement process. Which closed on January 12th and then we launched our aggregated community engagement summary, ACES. In mid-February. Now we're looking at the end of February. Here I've highlighted in green sort of our public facing opportunities. As I mentioned, right now we have our questionnaire live, but it is closing soon. So. Again, I please take the time to look at it. It's seven questions, so hopefully it's pretty painless. And then that closes on March 3rd. That's the Sunday. And then joining us the following Saturday, March 9th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. in City Hall. For our in-person drafting session. And now you might be wondering what happens after that. Our team is going to take home all of the great ideas that we hear on the 9th. And we're going to merge it into this first working draft of the city's vision, core themes and goals. And part of this process is sort of cross-referencing the work that we've done before. As well. And so you might remember in Phase 1, we created our existing condition summary, understanding. What does the sort of conditions on the ground in Gloucester look like right now? And then the beginning of Phase 2, that engagement that we've done where we have the aggregated community engagement summary. Our team's going to make sure that what we've learned from those two pieces is also incorporated into this vision, these core themes and these goals. If it doesn't come out like that on the 9th, but. We're not then giving you this vision and saying that's your vision. We're going to launch a community review period on April 1st that will be open for a month. Where people get to say, yes, I agree with this. I don't like this idea. I don't know where this came from. What if it said it this way? And we'll workshop, we'll workshop all of that. And at the same time, we're also going to be doing a future land use map. Which we'll launch on April 1st. And this is an idea of what the land uses on the ground of Gloucester might look like in 10 years. So this might be ideal locations for additional preservation areas. Potential ideas for targeting new development, economic development, housing development, things like that. Will put where whatever really comes through this process, we want to make sure we're highlighting in a spatial way as well. And folks will have the opportunity virtually to communicate with us on what they like, what they don't like from April 1st through May 5th. And then also we're offering an in-person opportunity on May 4th, again in City Hall. The opportunity for folks to come in. The questions will be exactly the same from the virtual to the in-person. So you don't have to do both. But feel free to join us in whatever way works best with your schedule. And then we'll make any sort of edits that we hear through that community review process. And then our plan will be to present on May 16th. And we always say that this is our sort of final draft. Because it's not done until it's done and we can continue to make changes as necessary until the plan is really completed. And so. Once we understand your community vision through Phase 2, we'll move into Phase 3, which is where we start to figure out. How Gloucester begins achieving this vision. So that's sort of a very high level, what's going on. This process is going really well so far. We're looking forward to continuing working. And a reminder of what's to come and hopefully just having folks save dates. So that they can continue to participate. Our goal is to always have. A virtual opportunity when we have an in-person opportunity so that folks can communicate with us however they'd like. There's also our project website, which always accepts public comment on it. And we encourage folks to join our mailing list as well to stay up to date on what's happening.
Excellent. Thank you, Alana. I do want to announce that our CAO Jill Cahill is now here in person. And um, I'd like to ask if there's any questions or comments from the council for Alana or Greg. On this, if we can keep each question to two minutes. And we'll start with Counselor Gro and then work our way down and around. Excellent. Counselor Grace, Counselor Worthley.
Do a few questions, if I may. I'll be brief. Thank you, Alana, for your presentation. Thank you, Greg Katamatory, for that as well. I think you're doing a great job and the engagement seems really fantastic. I wonder a couple of things. Uh, we have about 29,000 people in the city. We can't expect that everyone's going to participate. And it'd be good to know that we've done everything we can to outreach, do outreach. But firstly, is there a way to categorize whether. Some of the responses we're getting are repeated responses from the same people or the individual responses? Is there a way to, I know like if they're online, you could probably designate by cookies to figure out if someone's participating multiple times, but. You don't want it to be skewed in one way or another where the people who show up get their message into our plan versus the people who. Want to participate, but maybe aren't as active. Could you address that?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. The reason that our process measures participation points instead of participants. Is just sort of where you're going is that there are some ways that you can look at who might participate, but. All in all, we want to make sure that folks have an anonymous opportunity to participate in this process. There are a lot of reasons why people don't want to attach their name to a comment. And so we want to make sure people feel comfortable and safe sharing their ideas. And so we never suggest that, you know, X amount of people in your community have participated. It's always participation points. And also because we want folks to continue participating throughout this process. And so if they participate in one place, there's still more opportunities to participate later. And we don't want to say this person has participated, so their comments don't sort of connect anymore. And so in terms of. Whether someone has taken our survey, participated in a meeting in a box, added comments to our crowd map. We we asked people to participate in as many opportunities as they wanted to. And so. In terms of whether folks are skewing the results, we have not found that that happens. We run this process in a lot of communities and. We find that these things sort of, whether they seem really prevalent in one space. They sort of get through the process and they come out in the wash, has to say. If there's an idea that someone has that's maybe not popular with other folks, we're going to hear about it. And that won't be because one person has an idea or if multiple people have an idea, this process. A part of the reason it's so long is because it takes a very long time to understand what the community is hoping for. And we want to make sure that folks have opportunities. And not everything is an in-person or excuse me, is a virtual opportunity. So measuring, you know. From this IP address to that name to to everything. It's just not a completely possible. Piece, which is why we try to be very transparent in the beginning that we measure participation points versus participants.
Thank you, Alana. One more question. I participated in the last go-around of this 20 years ago or more and we didn't have. The technology that we have today. So I I appreciate that we're able to capture a lot more now. Regarding your March 9th meeting, which is 10 to 2, I understand people don't need to be there for the whole time. When they show up, they participate in the way that they are able to. Is that correct?
Our hope is that folks will stay for the whole time. We are running a workshop, which will run through a series of different activities. And so we hope that folks will be able to be there for as long as possible. We recognize that it's. Potentially inconvenient and it's long, but unfortunately we want to get this right and we want. To run through an activity that gives folks enough time to really connect with the people at their table. We're going to be working in small groups. And so. It will take that time to have those conversations, to come together, to participate. And so. Folks may not be able to stay the whole time. We understand that, but we hope that they will. And we'll take what information that we can get and we'll move forward and we'll do the community review process. And if things got missed in the beginning. We'll hear about it in the second half and we'll revise and move forward.
Thank you. Um, regarding the March 9th event, I wonder, and I'm not sure it's yours decision to make, but if we could look at maybe the. Call-all program that we have for snow bands and parking bands and things like that to get the message out because. You know, Saturday is a convenient day to do this, but there are people who are working second and third jobs and taking care of elderly parents or children and. They're probably not paying attention to as much as we think that they are reading our messages on Facebook and social media, they may not know. So. Um, maybe there's another way to to just check off that we've done everything we can to reach out to people. I look forward to seeing you on the 9th. Thank you.
Yeah. And for anyone who's not able to join us in person, again, that virtual opportunity is a great way to contribute in this space right now as well.
Thank you, Alana. Uh, Councilman Memhard, do you have anything to ask?
Yes, I just thank you again. The process is fascinating. It's different than things that we're necessarily used to in our daily life. The meetings in the box appeared very cumbersome and sort of challenging to get your mind around, but they work. Uh, and once we got got rolling with them, uh, it was a very helpful process in the ones that I participated with. And I look forward to seeing how those all shake out along with the unfolding steps of this process ahead of us. So thank you for your efforts.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilman Memhard. Uh, Counselor Benson. Do you have any questions or comments?
I have a comment and I just want to thank you for all your work and. Um, just also encourage folks in my ward specifically to go and do the questionnaire and also if they're able to participate. On the 9th to participate. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend, but I encourage all that are able to to attend and that. Questionnaire is a good virtual option for folks who are not able to attend. So I encourage everyone to. Take that questionnaire and I will be sharing that as well. So again, thank you for all your effort. And this is going to move the needle for our community and have a community as a whole to be part of that vision forward. Thank you.
Benson, Counselor Mujota, would you like to have any questions or comments?
So I'm going to piggyback on what Scott and Dylan said, except for I'm what for. No, thank you for everything you're doing. I agree with what the council has said. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mujota. Uh, Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Council President. So I have a question on the data collection. I completely understand the 2,997 participant points. I participated in that. It was easy. It was 10 minutes and it was very concrete data. Um, I also participated in two of the meeting in the box. One was the first one in Lanesville Community Center. The second was at Jane Remsen's house and. A member of the planning board. There were about 11 or 12 people there. Both were really rigorous conversations with really heartfelt conversations with the people that were there. Can you just explain a little bit on how you wrap up? That data of the heart and soul of those meetings in terms of. What the conversation was, particularly on that last question, which is more of the interactive question about where do we go next? Like, how was that wrapped up into the data collection of learning from the heart of the people?
So I just want to clarify and make sure I'm understanding your question correctly. You're sort of wondering in the the summary process, how do we capture the sort of. The voice, the soul of the conversation that was happening. So I think that's a phenomenal question. I appreciate this. That's one of the pieces that gets tricky when it comes to sort of data summaries. And it's why we want to use this questionnaire process to make sure that we're not missing those pieces. So much of this engagement is how many folks talked about. This topic and how many folks talked about this topic. And we're trying to make it measurable for you. Something that you can cling on to, but when we start to translate that into what is your city's vision. We want to make sure that we're capturing that, which is why this sort of questionnaire is going to act as our word bank. And make sure that we are going to use those words that the community is using to describe what your vision is. And as I mentioned before, if there are things we feel like. We heard a lot in the engagement process or things that were really glaring to us when we did existing conditions that are. Maybe missing from what comes out of this piece. We're going to flag those and bring those back to the attention of the community and say. Here are some things that we were thinking about that we didn't hear from you all in this this particular part of the process. Maybe we misheard you the first time. We just want to clarify and make sure this is not something that should be here. And that's what that April to May process looks a little bit like. And it's really why we put you all in the driving seat. I love the way that you said that about the the soul and the heart of those conversations. And you couldn't be more correct. That is the piece that. We can't capture from a survey response and a crowd map submission. And we get it a little bit in the meeting in a box. But even then, it's someone's notes of that conversation. And so. This process helps us really bring that voice back into the process. And so this process helps us really bring that voice back into the process.
Thank you.
Excellent. With that being said, I'd like to take the last comment. And this has been very successful. As far as from what we can see, it's new to us. You've been in this business for a while, working with communities. Gloucester is a community that tries to be very engaged in looking for our future. And it is working, and it's one of those processes that we all need to keep working with our constituents to get involved. And this is going to go on for a few more months. And I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done and everybody that's participated, whether it be a survey, a meeting in a box. And I couldn't be more happier at the early results from what we're seeing. You know more about it than we do, but I think that we're doing pretty good as a city in trying to make this work the best for our abilities. And thank you. With that being said, I don't know if our C A O would like to have a few moments on this, if she's good? No, she's good. And Greg, are you all right? Would you add anything?
Yeah, again, I think we'll just try to continue to, you know, provide regular updates. We also rely on you as counselors and to connect with your constituents, to let them know about these opportunities when they come about. And I think Alana really hit the head on what's happened over the last few months. There's always going to continue to be a point to check back in. So if somebody didn't get to participate in the last couple of different things, there's still going to be an opportunity to decide whether you feel like, you know, the next iteration or as this document evolves, whether it resonates with people. So again, it was always nice to continue to get the updates from Alana on a weekly basis to see how people are participating. The planning board set the goal of 10% participation points of the population. Obviously, those were not all necessarily unique, but we're only in phase two and we already passed that bar. So again, I think we're doing a great job of connecting with the community. And we have great resources in all corners of the community at this point to just build upon. So I think it's been a great success so far and would appreciate everyone to continue to get people involved.
Excellent. Thank you, Greg. I want to ask the rest of the council to keep working on this. It's a positive momentum that we have going forward. We're working with great people to try to find our goals and set what we need to do and work on them. Our administration is 100% behind this. And this is going to work. I'm pretty happy with the results that we're seeing tonight, and I'm glad we had this meeting. Thank you very much and have a great night.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Ready? So next, we have Madam Clerk, next up.
Confirmation of no appointments.
Perfect. Councilman Majota.
Committee recommendation on a motion by Councilman Majota, seconded by Council Grace, the ordinance and administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Tom Morgan to the Affordable House Trust term ending 2/15/26. An ISO move.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Tom, are you with us tonight? That's not a problem. Tom's not able to attend tonight. I can attest to his abilities without objection. I'd like to second the motion for his appointment. And this does not have to be by roll call because we have eight people of eight. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Eight in favors, zero opposed. And I don't believe I have to say absent. Yeah, no. Yeah, he's back to having fun. So next up, we have Committee for the Arts, John Cahill, term to expire 2/15/2028. And Councilman Majota.
Committee recommendation on a motion by Council Grace, seconded by Council Majota, ordinance and administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint John Cahill to the Committee for the Arts term ending 2/15/28.
And Tom, are you with us tonight? Oh, John?
And I so move.
Second.
John, you with us tonight?
Audrey.
Audrey.
Great. Do you want to step up to the mic?
I can't see my glasses in the audience. I'm sorry.
I saw you putting up your hand and I was like, is that John? So. Hi, John.
How you doing tonight, John? If you just wanted to introduce yourself to the full council? Excellent. And why would you like to be on the Committee for the Arts? Excellent. Thank you, John. Again, this doesn't have to be a roll call. This is just by all in favor? Any discussion? Any questions, discussion? Counselor Benson.
Thank you, Council President. John, I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate and putting your name forward to be on the Committee for the Arts. And as someone who has real world experience in the arts, I think that will be an added bonus to the committee. So thank you, John, for your dedication to an integral part of our community, which is the arts.
Councilman Majota.
Like I said, O N A, thank you for stepping up and to be proud of this committee. And the music and the art scene is very important in Gloucester, so thank you.
You. Counselor Gilman.
Ditto to what my colleagues have said. Thank you.
Counselor Gray.
I would just say welcome and just understand that you're joining a committee that is not shy on their opinions. So feel free to express yours.
Counselor Grace.
Music is like my pulse, so thank you.
Councilor Worthley.
John, thank you, just like my compatriot next to me here, music is mine as well. Thank you for your contributions. Looking forward to it.
John, I'm thrilled that you're doing this and I think you're maintaining a family tradition of involvement in the community of Gloucester, so thank you for doing so. Thank you.
John, sorry to cut you short when I announced you without, you know, comments, but you're totally qualified in O N A. You are awesome. So and bringing the music into the arts is great and go cut. I think we have a great venue in front of us and we're going to have a great time and an awesome summer. So with that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, John. All opposed? And that passes eight to zero. Next up for the Committee for the Arts, we have William Ergeron.
Burgoyne.
Burgoyne, term to expire 2/15/2028. How you doing tonight, William?
Hey, how's it going? Doing well, thank you.
If you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the Committee for the Arts?
Yeah, so I've lived in Gloucester for probably around eight years. I started at, I worked five years at Gloucester Stage and for the past two years at Rockport Music. I just got my master's degree in arts administration, where I studied political advocacy and public policy. So just definitely a huge, a huge part of my life, both academically and personally.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any counselor comments or questions? Counselor Benson.
Thank you, William, for stepping up to the plate. Your resume speaks for itself, so I look forward to supporting your appointment to this board.
Thank you.
Majota.
No, William, thank you. We spoke at O N A and thank you for stepping up and I appreciate it. You have my support.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
I agree with my colleagues once again.
Counselor Gray.
I'm very encouraged that we have a really diverse group of people on this committee. Now, we have musicians, we have stage presence, we have artists, we have people who had gallery experiences. It's really broadening our general perspective of what the arts mean in this community. I think it's a welcome addition. So thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Councilor Grace.
I'm excited for what you, what you bring to the table and I appreciate so much all that you've already done for the arts in this community and will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Councilor Worthley.
William, welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Memhard.
Here, here. Thank you, William.
Thank you.
William, thank you. I hope that the eight years turns into 108.
Likewise.
Have a long, successful life of serving the community and thank you.
Thank you so much, councilors.
So with that being said, do we have a recommendation? Counselor Majota.
Committee recommendation on a motion by Councilman Majota, seconded by Council Grace, the ordinance and administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint William Burgoyne to the city, sorry, to the Committee for the Arts, term ending 2/15/28. An ISO move.
Second.
All right, and this will be by a simple majority vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, eight to one. William, thank you very much and I look forward to getting to you. Sorry, eight to zero. Madam Clerk, next on the agenda.
Next is the consent agenda.
Right. Is there anybody that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? And all any matters off the agenda? We'll start with Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. I would like to remove the two information only, the MMA resolution supporting a local, state, federal partnership to address climate change, the MMA resolution supporting an enduring fiscal partnership between cities and town and the Commonwealth in fiscal 25 and beyond.
All right, go ahead on that. Are you going to pull the P and D?
I'd like to. Thanks for the email last night. I'd like to pull the special joint P and D planning board minutes, please. That's the one, right? Yeah.
So at this point, we need to hear from Counselor Gilman on that.
I'd like to, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the P and D minutes and the two information only, an ISO move.
Second.
That'll be by?
Voice vote.
Voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Counselor Gilman, go ahead.
So I just want to bring to your attention, councilors, the two major resolutions that came out of the MMA conference this year that was on January 19th and 20th in Boston. And these two resolutions are really important for us to know because this is the heart and soul of what our legislators are lobbying for right now in terms of budget. So the first one is on page 50 to 52 of our packet, and the second one is on page 44 to 48 of our packet. For people that are listening, look at our packet on the city website, read them, and then know that the vote was very powerful at the MMA conference of our 351 municipalities, that this was really important. So when you're talking to Ann Margaret and Bruce and other legislators, let them know that it's important. And so with that in mind, I'd like to move to accept those information only.
And this will be by majority again? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And that's eight in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Counselor Gilman. Counselor Gray.
Just for the record, Joanne did let me know four days ago that these weren't ready, but that's it. We just, they're just not ready for approval yet. They'll be on the next agenda.
Excellent. So again, this will just be by majority rule? All in favor?
There's not a vote. There's not a vote to take.
A vote, that's right. Yeah, okay. Perfect. So then I'd like to ask that the consent agenda be voted as amended. Perfect. We're good with that. Yeah, so now we have unanimous consent agenda. All those in favor?
I'd like to move to support the unanimous consent agenda, as noted, which is about free cash.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. So next up, we have standing, Madam Clerk.
Standing Committee report, the budget and finance standing February 22nd.
Councilman Memhard.
Thank you very much. Budget and Finance met at the Harbor Masters office Thursday evening. We have four items that we're bringing forward for your consideration, accepting funding from a variety of sources to benefit the city and our programs. The first item from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from our Sustainability Director requesting acceptance of a Green Communities Competitive Grant Award in the amount of $144,311. And I'll read the motion, if that's all right. On a motion by myself, Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept a Mass General Law 4453A, a state grant for the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Resources, a fiscal year 2024 through 2026, Green Communities Competitive Grant, in the amount of $144,311, for the purpose to fund energy conservation measures in various municipal facilities. The grant period is through September 30th, 2025, with a local match requirement of approximately 13%. An ISO move.
Second.
All right, so the motion will be moved by Councilman Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Simple majority, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Vote discussion? Any discussion?
I would just comment that Gemma Wilkins, our Sustainability Director, did a really excellent presentation. She's been out soliciting these grants specifically for opportunities that apply to our facilities. These are city-owned municipal facilities within the city, include several of the outlaying fire stations, a number of schools. There are funds to improve energy efficiency of municipal property. And, you know, there are other opportunities out there that she's additionally seeking, but these are what she was able to bring to us. And we were very enthusiastic about the good work that she is doing on our behalf.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilman Memhard. I do believe we did have a vote for aye. Sorry about the discussion on the end of that, but it's my first time doing this. Sorry. So next up, Counselor Menard, I'm sorry.
Have we voted that?
We did vote, yeah. It was aye.
Are you sure?
It was eight, eight to zero. I didn't ask for the zero, but the zero wasn't there.
We have some discussion on that.
On the zero?
The second item I have for us from Budget and Finance was a memorandum from the Committee for the Arts regarding the City of Gloucester's acceptance of the Eric Pap Tablet Rock Pastel. And on a motion by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept a donation under Mass General Law 4453A and one half, a gift of tangible goods to the City of Gloucester from Gregory Kahn for the Eric Pap Tablet Rock Pastel with an estimated value in the amount of $3,000. An ISO move.
Second.
Is there any council discussion or questions on this? Here are none? All in favor? Counselor Gray.
Is there any discussion whether this might be seen?
I'm not sure exactly or where they will ultimately decide to display it.
Yeah.
I think they're trying to make sure it's in good condition. I thought the mayor's office was going to be hosting it.
Okay, great.
That was, they were working that out.
Excellent. So with that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None? That passes eight to zero.
The third item from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from our Public Health Director requesting acceptance of a donation in the amount of $300. This is sort of an interesting one for all of us, but the Committee Recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept a cash donation under Mass General Law 4453A from the Associated Charities of Gloucester in the amount of $300. And this is specifically for the purpose of purchasing a basketball hoop for the Riverdale Park Community Center. An ISO move.
Second.
Second.
All right. Any council questions or comments on this?
I just wanna thank, um, the, uh, Association, Associated Charities of Gloucester for donating this basketball hoop for, um, the Riverdale community. Thank you so much.
Uh, Council Grove.
I should just point out for clarity or for transparency that my wife is a, is a, uh, member of the Associated Charities Board, but I have no conflict in this.
With that being said, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So the ayes have it? Eight in favor, zero opposed.
And our, uh, final item from Budget and Finance this evening was a memorandum from the Veteran Services Director requesting our acceptance of donations in the total amount of one thousand dollars. Committee Recommendation on a Motion by Council, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council accept a cash donation under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A to support veteran services in the amount of one thousand dollars from the following business partner within our community, and that is the First Parish Congregational Church. The amount is one thousand dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Is there any council comments or questions? Uh, Councilor Worthley.
Just wanna add that, um, Mr. Kenny Costa shared with us that since, uh, Ms. Chippereeney's been there and Mr. Kukuru, they've raised sixty-five thousand dollars through the veterans, through donations made to the Veterans Office. So I think that's worth noting, that that's a sizable amount of money people contributing to veterans.
Excellent, thank you, Council Worthley. Any other questions, comments? So without that, we'll, uh, go for the roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Eight in favor, zero opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
The Special Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee Report of February twentieth.
And there are no items under this.
Is the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of February twenty-first.
Excellent. Council Grove.
We have, uh, there's no action required for this, but we had a public hearing on the, uh, installation of a joint-owned pole on Pleasant Street, uh, near the intersection of Liberty Street that will be taking place, um, what did we hear, about sometime in March? Is that the expectation? Uh, so, uh, there'll be a little bit, a little bit of disruption on that street while that's being installed, but, uh, it will, the people, and National Guard will be letting the, the neighborhood know.
Excellent, thank you, Council Grove. With that being said, we're both ready to go into our public hearings and I'd like to take a two-minute recess. Anybody have any objections? Perfect, thank you. Two-minute recess, please. All right, thank you all for coming back. We're gonna move on to our first, first public hearing, which is the public hearing. What, Madam Clerk?
The first public hearing is Public Hearing twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four, rezoning twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one, City Council Order Number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three to amend Gloucester zoning ordinances, section five point one, six point two of affordable component and section one, two, I'm sorry. And affordable component in section five sixteen thirteen, payment in lieu. This was...
Uh, we, we are gonna open this public hearing and we're gonna continue it to the March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four City Council meeting. Thank you.
So it's Public Hearing twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five, City Council Order twenty twenty-three dash oh five eight to amend Gloucester Code of Ordnances, chapter twenty-two, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article Six, Traffic Schedules, Section twenty-two dash two eighty-five, Parking of Trucks, Trailers, Trailer Trucks and Other Commercial Vehicles, Section twenty-two dash two seventy, Parking prohibited at all times, and Section twenty-two dash two ninety-one, Away Zones Regarding Parker Street.
We're gonna open the public hearing and we're gonna continue this till April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four City Council meeting. Thank you.
Public Hearing twenty twenty-four dash zero zero six to amend Gloucester Code of Ordnances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Six, Finance Division Four, Trust Funds, Regarding Section Two dash six oh five B, Same Membership, By Deleting the Words. In addition, the City Community Development Director shall serve as an ex officio trustee.
All right. So I'm gonna open the public hearing. And we have our CAO, Jill Cahill. That's a first timer, too.
Nope. No.
Now? Thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the council. If I may, I'll just kind of address the larger, um, of the kind of reason why the mayor put all these, uh, changes forward to the boards, committees, and commissions. And then I'm happy to, as we go through the public hearings, answer questions one by one if, if they come up. Um, I think the easiest way to say this, we talked about it a lot at O and A. Uh, the mayor was looking to simplify, um, some of the ordinances around appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Uh, something that he has taken on himself from the beginning is, uh, meeting with each of these people, uh, all of our, all the volunteers, making the appointments, meeting with the chairs. We've met with each of the chairs of every board and commission this past, I'd say in the past six months. Um, one of the main, uh, main things we've heard from people is problems with quorum and attendance. So you'll see a lot of changes in, uh, maybe reducing nine to seven and adding some alternates and things like that. So his goal here was really to make sure our volunteers, who are committed to the work, that they do feel, feel valued and that their work can be completed in each meeting, that they don't show up at a meeting and not have a quorum. So that's a goal in simplifying each one of these. Um, I think the one in front of us right now is...
Do we use one of these microphones here?
Just have a seat. Yeah, then we have to worry about it the whole time.
This feels wrong. Can we bring that microphone to the podium? Dylan, can that microphone reach the podium?
Maybe another microphone. I'll just stand here.
Oh, she owes Council Cahill.
That does not feel right. Thank you. The Community Development Director is kind of redundant on the, um, Affordable Housing Trusts because the mayor is already on the Affordable Housing Trust and the Community Development Director, um, is, is their appointee. So, um, that's this specific one. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions as we go through on each one of these. And I think, I would, I would just say the other thing I wanna make sure that I say the mayor would make sure, would wanna hear is, again, that it's really important to him that each one of these appointees and volunteers feels, feels rewarded by the work that they do. They're a really important part of our city, which I know each one of you has acknowledged as they come through. You've seen the appointment, so thank you to every one of our volunteers.
Not a problem. Uh, with that being said, the, uh, the next five or six public hearings all involve, um, comments that may be bordered on what, uh, Jill has just said. So if someone would like to comment or, uh, say something between for all these, you may wanna ask now to make it easier with our, uh, obvious inconvenience to the mic. So is there any questions or comments that you'd like to ask her for the next, for pretty much the rest of the meeting on the appointments and public hearings? Uh, Council Mujota.
Uh, no question, some comment. I think it's great to sort of reduce the numbers from nine to seven and get the alternates. I think that not having a quorum is a big issue where people, you know, we're also busy in our lives and we, you know, these are volunteers that make time and try to go to meetings and when they can't do any, conduct any business, they're wasting their time changing their plans. So this is a great idea, um, for the city, so thank you.
Hillman.
I know we're, are we at questions? Can I, is this a question?
Technically, it's a public hearing for the first one.
Okay, so then I have a question, but I will hold on that. Thank you.
All right, so if there are questions, we'll actually open the, uh, we'll move on through the hearing and then we'll do the questions afterwards. So...
Point of information, Councilor, are you going to do, um, you know, a public hearing on each of these requests specifically to each one?
We, we are, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so this one here, um... Is there anybody speaking in favor of this? Anybody speaking opposed? See, none. So then we'll go to council questions.
And ask me for communications, no, there are none.
Is there any communication? So sorry. And now we can go on to council questions?
Yes.
So now, uh, Council Hillman.
So, this could be a question for Jill. Um, so on the issue of that, of this particular public hearing, in addition, the City Community Development Director shall serve as an ex officio trustee. Is there, um, any issue if we were to say, or designate in case that particular, um, position is being recruited for or if there's something that needs to be handled? Um, we, that's the way we do it on the Council on Aging. We have the Public Works Director or a designate. So it just gives us a little flexibility. Asking, you're asking the mayor to answer your phone for you?
That's my alarm saying, say goodnight to the kids.
Night, children.
No, they're not watching. So is this one working? Yeah. I think, cause it's ex officio, they're not a voting member. So I don't think it's necessary, but if, I mean, obviously if it's the will of the council, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, here are none. Close the public hearing? And then ask for the career report.
Many recommendations on a motion by Council Grace, seconded by Councilor Mujota. The Ordinance and Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter Two, Emission, Article Six, Finance Division Four, Trust Funds, Section Two through six oh five B, Same Membership As Follows. Section Two through six oh five, same membership. A, acting under authority MGL, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-five C, there is hereby created a Board of Trustees for the trustee, for the trust established pursuant to Sections Two through six oh one through two through six fifteen, for the purpose set out in the MGL's, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-five C. The Board shall include no fewer than five trustees, including the mayor, ex officio, or his written designate, ex officio. The remaining trustees shall be appointed by the mayor and approved by the City Council for a term not to exceed two years. B, the board members shall have the knowledge or expertise in the areas, including, not limited to, affordable housing, real estate, real estate finance, or housing construction. The mayor, however, shall not be required to appoint board members from all these areas of knowledge or expertise, but shall only be required to make his best effort to find the persons that meet this requirement. Delete. In addition, the City Community Development Director shall serve as the ex officio trustee. An ISO move.
All righty. Uh, so, is there any council discussion? Council Worthley.
I wonder if we could make a slight amendment to have it be to require to make his slash her...
Thank you.
Best effort to find persons that meet this requirement.
Uh, yes, that would be, something would be his dash her. That was something we're trying to clean up in old language, so, yeah, definitely. Thank you.
I'll just make a motion to amend it, to add slash her after his.
Okay.
So on the amendment?
I just had a question where, um, if I could make a friendly amendment, instead we could say them, um, or they, um, if that would work, if that could work.
Is her, they? Is slash her slash they?
It would just say, I would just say they, they are them, so it's, it's completely, um, neutral, if that makes sense. I'm, I'm, if I, if I can do that friendly amendment, but...
I, I believe we have done that on a lot of other, uh, material for that purpose. So, um, I would second, uh, Council Benson.
So we're ending my amendment anyway to, not his slash her, but just completely to they.
They, them. We could say they, them, if, um...
In this case, their best effort.
Yeah.
Where is the other one? I see in B, where is it, name?
It is twice in there with his. So...
So wherever it appears, I guess.
So I, I guess the, the first motion is Council Worthley's on the his, her. Uh, on that motion, uh, all in favor?
Accepted his friendly motion.
So you accept his friendly motion? So on, on Council Benson's motion, uh, do we have all in favor? Uh, Council Grove?
I, I know that we're trying to make an effort to clean this up and I, I would, I would like to, to make a, a more aggressive effort to do this. At some point, uh, we're doing it sort of piece bill. Maybe we can make, uh, an, an overall change that eliminates this, uh, in the future so that we do it all at once, um, wherever it shows. Not, not tonight, but we, we can just put that forward to O and A, I think. Uh, we're gonna have a... So that's, that's all, that's my only comment. At some point, I'd like to see this done, it wholesale.
So we're, we're working off of the friendly motion from, uh, Council Benson.
Amendment. And I'm just looking at the language. I would, I would just amend, if we could amendment further and it would say to make their best effort to find persons that meet this requirement. So it would be their best effort. I'm seeing it there. So I just wanted to, I looked at it more clearly and that's what I would propose. That's would be my proposal, if that makes sense.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. So we have the amendment, the friendly move for Council Benson. It passes, eight in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. And Council Grove, definitely, um, we did make a lot of changes with this, but we should make a, a unanimous change that it, whenever it comes up, it's, it's standard, that we agree with the language. So we can, we can work on that for the next meeting and see if we get something up there. Thank you.
We need to refer something like that to O and A for formally? Or do we, I'm, I'm looking at Joanne. Or is it just something that you guys can, can pull together in O and A?
I think that O and A would be more than happy to do that. So we can, we can definitely do that and put it on the agenda, so...
Mr. President, we approve the amendment.
We are now gonna vote on the main motion. And on the main motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight in favor, zero opposed. Uh, next...
Can I just ask for a clarification? Is it going moving forward or you want it to go through the whole code? Cause that is gonna be costly. When you ask them to change his, her.
Are you talking about the, uh, the folks who host the, uh...
The Code of Ordnances, yes.
I think moving forward would be the next step at O and A.
I wonder, with that being said, as a new member, um, would there, is there an ability, do we go through an ordinance change type of, like, discussion where we just go through the ordinances, we clean up language? Is there, I'm, just pardon my ignorance, is there a timeframe? Like, do we do it every, every, like, odd number or something like that?
It's not a timeframe. It's just, it's a, it's a costly change to go through the whole ordinance.
In actu- in actuality, um, maybe we should just be looking at this going forward, because we did do this last year and we went through, I don't know how many he, she's that I had to read in a meeting to make up for all the ordinance that we already corrected, to change them. So maybe just going forward, that we correct them at our stance in front of us and as written, that we change them to be correct. Cause we, we, we did do this last year. And so to go back and, and go through the whole thing again, I think that was Joanne's concern. So maybe... So maybe forward, we just make sure we do it right.
That's a quick question. When you mentioned cost, is there a sense of what kind of cost is involved in that?
Every time you make an amendment, and there are these public hearings, any change to the Code of Ordinances, it costs so much per amendment. And then it costs so much to upload the new, the language and everything.
Do we have to advertise?
I'll tell you right now, to date, and we haven't even paid for the fourth quarter, we already spent $12,000 on, to update the code for one year.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Council Gilman.
So it's not really on the agenda, but I think it's a good conversation. I would suggest, based on the nonverbals from Joanne, that we just, that we just wait until we hit each one of these and then address it proactively like we did today, rather than do a major overhaul, because that's unnecessary taxpayers' dollars for he, she, or their, or whatever. It just seems pretty irrelevant in the scheme of all the things that we have on our plate.
I would argue it's not irrelevant. I would argue that it's not irrelevant.
If it's going to cost us thousands and thousands of dollars.
It's expensive, but it's not irrelevant.
Not to continue this conversation, and we can continue later, my, my point was really to say, like, there are many communities that do, like, ordinance change, like, an ordinance change we go through, we see, like, what's, what needs to be changed, et cetera. That was really my question. But again, like, I concur that we can, as this comes along, we can make those changes, and this is important, I think. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Benson. But we, we actually did do that last year.
Very good.
So this is something new that was in front of us, and it was just more of a, the way it's written, and we get to, we get to put ourselves in a position where we actually see this and correct it as it goes, because it is a reality. Excellent. So I believe we voted on that, and everything passed. So next, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 2024-007, amend Gloucester Court of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Boards, Commissions, Councils, and Committees, Division 4, Council on Aging, Section 2-440, establish composition appointment in terms of members.
Excellent. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to ask if there's anybody speaking in favor. Is there anybody speaking in opposition? Is there any communications?
There are none.
Any questions from the councillors? I'd like to close the public hearing and go on to the committee report. Counsel Majota.
Many recommendation on a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Grace. The ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that city council amend Gloucester Court of Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Boards and Commission, Councils and Committees, Division 4, Council on Aging, Section 2 through 440, establish composition appointment in terms of members as follows. Section 2 through 440, establish composition appointment in terms of members. A, there is hereby established a council of aging governed by a board of directors of up to, delete 11, add seven voting members, add, and two alternate members. B, the mission of the council of aging shall be to. One, identify the needs of the elder population in the community. Two, educate the community regarding issues facing seniors and advocate on their behalf. Three, promote and develop, promote the development of programs and activities, as well as the coordination of existing services to fulfill identification needs. Four, maintain a working relationship with government and private agencies and organizations, and. Five, be consistent of relevant legislation initiatives and work to respond accordingly. C, the director of public works and the public health director, of their respective representatives, as well as a member of the city council appointed by the city council president, shall serve as non-voting ex officio members of the board of directors. D, members shall be appointed by the mayor on a rotating basis so that not more than three new members shall be confirmed annually for a three-year term. E, all appointment members shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor and be free from professional conflicts of interest. And I so move.
Excellent. So it was moved by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Is there any council discussion? We will go with Counselor Gilman.
So I will be supporting this. I think the merits are obvious. I'm on this board as an ex officio member, and there are times where we're gung ho and we're ready to rock and roll, but we don't have a quorum. So I think that this will be very helpful, and it's been reviewed with our council on aging board, and we feel like it's the right thing to do. So I'm going to be supporting this. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Gilman. Counsel Worthley.
Yes, I'll be supporting this as well. There's a line in here which is, is actually a copy of what's already in the ordinance, but it's only on this, it only appears in ordinance one time. All appointed members shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor and be free from professional conflicts of interest. I agree with the conflicts of interest. I do wonder, just in general, if any of us were mayor, and there's someone on the committee that has a difference of opinion, they're allowed to have a difference of opinion, right? And I don't think we would ever want to say, well, you know, you serve at the pleasure of the mayor, that means you have to sort of do whatever that mayor wants you to do. So I don't, that's not what this, this administration is not advocating for that, because that's not a change. That's what's in the ordinance already. I just want to throw that out for discussion. Is there a more professional and less sort of controlling way to say that they serve at the, I don't know, it just feels a little, I don't know, dominating to say you, you work for me, because they don't.
Counsel Gro.
Yeah, I kind of agree with you on that. I think the, they certainly are appointed by the mayor. Ostensibly, one would, one would think that they are approved by the mayor in the approval process, and that once that person is on the board or committee, that they serve their best to do what is best for the committee and for the city of Gloucester. And that may include having conflicts with the mayor, and one would think that one would not have to be beholden to the mayor in making those decisions. And also, as far as being free from professional conflicts of interest, that's, that's already an implied requirement in being part of a board and commission, is that you identify and, and explain any conflicts that you might have. So it might be worth taking the entire E off the table.
All right. In the short seconds that we had with this conversation, Counselor Gilman had made the same comment to me at the same time as Jeff was speaking, and she had also brought up the dismay of that. So if Counsel Gilman would like to make a recommendation to remove E, or do you want to speak, or do you want?
I guess I was thinking of removing the first part, all appointed members shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor. And my proposed amendment would have been just by deleting all appointed members, actually, to, to continue saying all appointed members shall be free from professional conflicts of interest. So I would, I would delete, shall serve at the pleasure of the member, the mayor. But I don't know if we want to talk more about eliminating the whole thing. So I'm, I'm not going to.
I'll, I'll put a motion forward to eliminate the entirety of E.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you were going to actually spell it out, eliminating it. It's easy.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor for an amendment to remove E, all appointed members shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor and be, be free from professional conflict of interest.
The motion?
And on this motion.
Again, just to repeat myself, all appointed members shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor. They are appointed by the mayor, they're approved by the city council, city council is responsible for vetting them. At that point, the issue of professional conflicts of interest should certainly be raised in the process of the approval, and that any potential, like, if they work for a particular organization or something like that, that ought to be known. But again, it's the responsibility of a, of a member of board and commission to identify conflicts. Everyone might have a potential conflict at some point. Your responsibility as a board member, commissioner, city councillor, is to step back from that particular situation when the, when the case arises, so that you're not, you're not putting at jeopardy the integrity of the commission board that you serve on. So I think that's implied in, in, in service to the community, and I don't think we necessarily need to have it in the ordinance if it doesn't appear anywhere else.
Thank you, Counsel Gro. Counsel Memhard.
I'm, in principle, I agree. However, I don't think it hurts to have it restated as clearly as it is. We all know that it's not, not uncommon occurrence for citizens to feel that the issue has been raised with us numerous times, that it's a perceived conflict of interest with volunteers serving on various boards of commissions, or maybe even more than one. And just in respect to that citizen concern, which is a theme that we all have to deal with, I would suggest that it's not inappropriate to leave that prohibition and warning as part of this document.
Thank you, Counsel Memhard. Any other councillors that have, like, to add to this discussion? Counsel Worthley.
On the motion, so firstly, thank you, Counsel Gro and Gilman, for recognizing this and supporting it. I did raise the key part being shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor. I am not at all concerned about redundancy of free from conflict of interest. It is a redundancy. It should be understood already, but I agree with Counsel Memhard that it can't hurt to have that in there too. So I think if Counsel Gro made the motion to delete that, I don't know if you'd accept their friendly motion to just have it read, all appointed members shall be free, free from professional conflicts of interest, and delete the shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
I'm willing to take a chance on a vote, and then you can bring up a new amendment, if you'd like to.
That's fair. Anyway, back to the motion. I think that a good mayor is going to, we have one, we are going to encourage disagreement. We're going to encourage dialogue, and we get better, right? Iron sharpens iron. And so if there's a strong opinion that's, that's not in concert with the mayor, you want to take that into consideration, and you wouldn't want anyone to feel like they were afraid to disagree, because, oh, I signed up to be at this pleasure of the mayor. So again, this isn't about this mayor, it's about the next 400 years and just doing it right. So I will be supporting the motion.
Excellent. Thank you. With that being said, anybody else have anything to add to the conversation? I, I've always thought myself that it was always a weird situation that you, that you serve at the pleasure of the mayor. Your, your job is to actually give information on what you feel is best for the city being on a board. And it makes sense to me, the people that are appointed to these boards are good people. They're, they're hardworking people, the mayor does a good job picking them in the past, and in the future, I hope it remains the same. But if a committee is brought together to give the best advice to the actual mayor, I don't think they should have any worry about making someone happy with what they actually recommend is best for the city. So I, I think that I will support Counsel Gro's amendment to remove E from this. Thank you. So with that being said, is there any other questions or comments? So this will be by majority? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed? Nope. All right. So this passes seven to one. And now we're back to the main amendment. And the motion on the main amendment was from.
The main, the main motion.
Yeah, Counsel Majota, seconded by Worthley. So on the main motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Zero. So hearing that, the motion passes eight in favor, zero opposed with the amendment. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next on the agenda.
Public hearing 2024-008, to amend Gloucester Court of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Boards, Commissions, Councils, and Committees, Division 6B, the Lindsay Coolidge Philanthropy Award Committee.
I'd like to open the public hearing. All those speaking in favor? We have our CAO.
Hi, thank you.
Yes.
Again, I'd just like to make a quick notation that my wife is a member of this committee, Sarah Gro, but there's no conflict here on voting this. Yeah. And then some.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out, this one's a little different. It's changing from a standing committee to an ad hoc committee. Those of you who know, we just recently did a Lindsay Coolidge Award. They're not given regularly, so we had an issue with the members feeling like they had to have, you know, quarterly meetings when it's, it's given at the time when it feels important. So, so this one's a little bit of a different change, but also goes back to the streamlining and really valuing our volunteers.
Excellent. Thank you, Jill. Anybody speaking in opposition? Is there any communications?
There are no communications.
Are there any questions from councillors?
Just a quick question, so folks at home understand what an ad hoc committee is? So specifically, like, this would meet if there's a need, if, like, the award comes up, et cetera. Is that kind, that's what it would need, correct? So the folks at home understand.
Yes, that's correct. Ad hoc means that as needed, they'll meet as needed.
Can I add something to that? It, it also means that they don't, are not necessarily responsive to being a public meeting. And my understanding is that one of the awkwardnesses of this particular committee is that having a public meeting where you're talking about the prospect of giving someone an award and then not voting for that person, or it created a very difficult situation when you had a very good outcome at the end of the tunnel, it made the process awkward.
And that's a great point, Counsel Gro. Thank you. Thank you, Jill, and thank you, Counsel Benson. So to close the public hearing and call for the committee report.
Many recommendation on a motion by Counsel Grace, seconded by Counsel Majota. The ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend the Gloucester Court of Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Boards and Commission, Councils and Committees, Division 6B, Lindsay Coolidge Philanthropy Award Committee as follows. Section 2 through 47, mendalian, Lindsay Coolidge Philanthropy Mendalian, delete, shall be awarded to a citizen, add, may be awarded in appreciation for outstanding generosity, caring, notable philanthropy which has contributed to the betterment of the community. Section 2 through 48, 80, committee, delete. A, there shall be a Lindsay Coolidge Philanthropy Award Committee which shall consist of four persons appointed by the mayor. The mayor shall serve as a committee and shall be the fifth member thereof. Terms of the members shall be. Determined with the mayor. B, none of the four appointed members of the committee shall be held, shall hold any elective or appointed office with the government of the city when appointed, and should they later hold such an office, their membership on the committee shall be declared vacant. The committee shall serve as the executive function with administration of the mayor's office, add, the mayor may create an ad hoc committee to assist with consideration of potential recipients of the medal. Delete. Section 2 through 481, chairperson. The mayor of his/her designate shall be chairperson of the committee. Sections, delete 242, add 2481 through 2490, reserved. And I so move.
Any council questions or comments? Seeing none. This was moved, and it was seconded by Counsel Gro. Gro, I'm sorry. Mayor, Mayor Gro. So this will be by simple. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, eight to one. The ayes have it, eight to one. Madam Clerk? Eight to none. Next on the agenda, please.
Public hearing 2024-009 to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards, Commissions, Councils and Committees, Division Fourteen, Open Space and Recreation Advisory Committee.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak in favor?
I read about this in the paper this morning and, oh, I'm Alexandra, I live at fourteen Sawyer Avenue, Lanesville, and I read about this in, to Morris, I read about this in the paper, and nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, and I was just surprised. And it seems, I'm just wondering if we could hear something about the implications of it, like, open space was something I was thinking about getting involved in, but now here, what, it's shrinking or, I don't know, I just would, this seems, what are the implications of nine, ten, eleven, and twelve? It seems scary and extreme because our open space and our recreation and all the green space, this is some of our most rich treasures.
Excellent, thank you on that. It's kind of a weird question on whether you're for it or against it. We hope we can clear this up for you. Would the CAO like to talk about this? Or would you like us to answer that?
I'm happy to. So I think we talked about this a lot at ONA and I hope it came through in the article today, but if it didn't, I'm glad you were able to ask the question. The goal is by no means to make the committee smaller or less important. The open space and rec committee actually just finished a really important open space plan. They're an extremely involved committee. The goal is, and the mayor being at the time a city councillor who created, I believe was behind the Stage Four Park Committee and the Magnolia Pier or the Magnolia Woods Committee, they were creating one-off committees that were in response to an issue instead of taking an overview of all of our open spaces as a whole. And it was creating kind of the, a strange rub between where the open space committee was involved and when each of, each one of these kind of oversight committees was involved. So the goal is actually to do a better job of looking at all of our open spaces committees, how they work together, how they interact, how we can support each one and not just looking at one specifically or the other specifically. So the goal is actually to make it more comprehensive and highlight each of the open spaces more. That also gives an important piece to this amendment is it gives the open space committee the ability to create an ad hoc or a subcommittee for each one of the, for whatever topic comes up at the time. So, and we were also, so the mayor, as I spoke to earlier, met with the chairs of each one of these committees. And when he spoke, one of the things he did here specifically was ask people who were leaving Dogtown, Magnolia Woods, and Stage Four to join the open space committee. So we do have representatives from those previous committees now on the open space committee so they can all interact and have the conversation in a more comprehensive way.
Excellent, thank you, Jill, I really appreciate that. Is there anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there any communications?
There are no communications.
Mr. President, all communications, I know it wasn't received.
It was late.
Right.
So we decided we're going to do something a little bit different.
Okay, I don't know if you'd be able to read it either way, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the councillors? Then I'd like to close the public hearing? And call for the committee report.
Any recommendation on a motion by councillor Marjota, seconded by councillor Gray? The ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards, Commissions, Councils and Committees, Division Fourteen, Open Space and Recreation Advisory Committee as follows. Section two through five fifty-one, establish composition appointment terms. There is hereby established an open space and recreation committee which is created to formally implement an open space and recreation plan, OSRP, for the city. The open space and recreation committee will assist in the city, will assist the city in its future actions with regard to open space parcels with the city. The committee shall consist of seven members and two alternate members who shall be appointed by the mayor from the residents of the city and confirmed by the city council. The member shall serve for three-year staggered terms beginning on the date of appointment and ending on February fourteenth as required by the city charter. And section two through five fifty-four, authorities and responsibilities. A, the open space and recreation committee shall act as an advisory committee to the mayor, city council, municipal boards, and general public on matters concerning open space and recreation and shall have no purgatory powers. B, a majority of appointed members serving on the committee shall constitute a quorum and no meeting shall be continued without a quorum being present unless a subcommittee has been established. C, the committee shall submit a summary of its activities and progress on a semi-annual basis in the months of September and April. Delete. D, the open space and recreation committee may promote ad hoc committees to develop stewardship for public open space. Such activities shall be coordinated with the Parks and Department, with the Parks Department and Conservation Commission. Add, D, the open space and recreation committee may establish ad hoc or subcommittees to study, advise, and recommend to the city full committee stewardship programs and strategies for public open space and recreation. And I so move.
So the motion was made by councillor Majota and councillor Grow is pointing to councillor Worthingley. So we'll hand it to them. So with that being said, this is going to be, is there any councillor comments on this? Councillor Grow?
I'm supporting this and the following motion is going to be coming forward. I think, to your point about condensing it, I think part of the problem we're having is that we're actually balkanizing, we've balkanized it somewhat, and so that we've got a number of organizations that are, all have a very similar mission, but that aren't necessarily talking to each other or necessarily working in concert with each other's goals. So I think this does a good job. I know it seems like it's shrinking it, but I think what it's going to do is it's going to focus attention and energy on a more comprehensive view of what the city is doing with its open space, and I think that's going to be a positive development, I think, overall.
Excellent, thank you councillor Grow, councillor Gilman.
Yeah, I'm going to be supporting this. I was part of, I actually was the writer of the Dogtown Preservation Commission Ordinance with the assistance of Mike Hale and Jim Distino, but that's neither here nor there. The issues that I believe this will be helpful for is that, you know, we have a, we have a high-level open space and recreation commission right now. When they did their entire new plan last year, which was a participatory plan with the whole community, it was very clear that there was so much overlapping with the work that all these three other boards and commissions were working on. And that just doesn't make sense. It also fights for the same staff that needs to attend. And when you can't get staff who, they're so busy to attend all the four boards and commissions, it's much, it's awesome to have them attending one because that really needs to be, it, these boards and commissions are great to have volunteers involved and, but it needs to be teamed up with city staff. And I think that this is a really good way to do that. And I also wanted to just say that I was so impressed that at our last Dogtown meeting, which was on February first, Dan Morris, who chairs open space, attended, as did Mark Pullen, the vice chair of open space and recreation, and it was just great to have them there. They truly understand where we're leaving, where we're passing off. We have approved minutes now that we're passing over to open space. And I think there's been a really good continuity plan in the members of Dogtown, which I'm speaking for right now, that are going to stay involved either as a member, as an alternate member, or as an ad hoc. So there's a great interest. So that's what we want. We want our volunteers to stay involved with the things that they're passionate about because there's talent, there's historical knowledge, and we have some great volunteers. And I'm feeling good about this, so I will be supporting this. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Gilman. Anybody else like to comment on this? The councillor Worthingley.
So questions, so I will be supporting this and I think the administration's done a good job to help manage the volunteers and like councillor Gilman saying, make sure there's a staff person assigned to one committee versus five or six committees, three or four committees and having multiple staff people. The only question I want to ask, and I may have missed it in this process, or forgive me if that's the case, will there be at least a potential for someone on the committee who represents some of these committees that were dissolving? So they're going to represent everything, but for example, the needs for the thirty-five hundred acres of Dogtown are very different than Stage Four Park, right? And you wouldn't want to lose whatever value people bring to the table on a specific place. I think I know what we're trying to do here, but you wouldn't want to lose that representation, if you will. So is it established already that someone on the overall committee will have that?
Magnolia Woods and Stage Four Park both have members that were put in last month by the administration to the open space as representatives. All five wards are represented in these areas. And I believe the plan is if something comes up in each particular area, there's the ability for them to have an ad hoc committee to work on a separate issue if it needs to be done. But everybody is represented that has been broken down, the committees have met and talked with the mayor before this happened.
Thank you. So going forward though, as, you know, people's terms expire, look forward twenty, thirty, forty years, will it be sort of by ordinance that there needs to be someone who represents Magnolia Woods and someone who represents Dogtown on the committee? Or is it just the assumption, mayor, whoever that would be, would say, I want a representative that's going to fight for this area or that area? So it's just sort of an overall question I could throw out there.
Jill.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. We wouldn't, we're moving away from putting things like that into ordinances because that's what's gotten us, that's one of the things we're streamlining now. We have a lot that say you have to have one member from this and one member from that and one, and who's to say a constituent from Ward Four has more passion for Dogtown than a constituent from Ward Two, right? So we're moving away from that on purpose so that we're, A, not handcuffed into trying to find people to fill positions that might not pigeonhole them, and we also, the open space in Gloucester is for everyone. There's not one person who represents one space better than the other. So, no, it was deliberately not put into the ordinance that way, but we were also very deliberate, as councillor Gilman said, to make sure that the historical knowledge from each one of these has been represented and passed down to the current open space committee so that they can have it moving forward.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Alright, so I move forward with the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, eight in favor, zero opposed. Next, madam clerk.
Public hearing 2024-010 to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards, Commissions, Councils and Committees, Division Fifteen, Magnolia Woods Oversight and Advisory Committee.
Oh, like to open the public hearing? You love that.
Getting a foul heart attack over there.
Is there anybody speaking in favor? Is there anybody speaking in opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
Any questions from councillors? Let's close the public hearing? And ask for the committee report.
This must be sick of my voice by now, so I do apologize.
Do you want me to read it? Or do you want?
I'll do this one, this one.
Audrey, do it.
It's a good one, I'll take this one, Marjorie can do the next.
Committee recommendation on a motion by councillor Nolan, seconded by councillor Marjota, the ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards, Commissions, Councils, Committees, Division Fifteen, Magnolia Woods Oversight and Advisory Committee by deleting in its entirety and to add sections two through five fifty-five through two through five fifty-seven, reserved, and I so move.
Is there any councillor questions? No comments? Alright. So it's been moved by councillor Majota, seconded by councillor Grow, and this will be by voice, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So this motion passes, eight in favor, zero opposed. Next on the agenda, madam clerk.
Public hearing 2024-011, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter Fifteen, Parks and Recreation by deleting Article Two, Stage Four Park Advisory Committee in its entirety and by deleting sections fifteen dash eighteen and adding fifteen dash fifteen to fifteen dash twenty-nine, reserved.
So, open the public hearing? The hammer needs to be hammered.
I like it.
Anybody speaking in favor? Anybody in opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
Any questions from councillors? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing? And I'll call for the committee report.
Any recommendation on a motion by councillor Nolan, seconded by councillor Marjota, the ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter Fifteen, Parks and Recreation by deleting Article Two, Stage Four Park Advisory Committee in its entirety. Committee recommendation? Read it again? Yeah, committee recommendation on a motion by councillor Nolan, seconded by councillor Gray. The ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter Fifteen, Parks and Recreation, Article Two, as follows, delete sections fifteen through eighteen, add section fifteen through fifteen through fifteen through twenty-nine, reserved.
Alright, so we're going to, we're going to, you moved the first one, correct? Because there's two motions on this.
Needs two.
You read two.
I read two.
The first one, we're right now.
I read both of them and I moved the one.
Alright, so you moved the first one and the second one?
Second.
He didn't move it.
I didn't move it, I guess, I moved, I read both of them and then moved both of them at the same time.
Alright, so you're moving the first one right now?
Yes.
Alright, and it was seconded by councillor Grow. Is there any councillor questions or comments? This will be a majority vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So this motion passes, eight in favor, zero opposed, and on the second motion that councillor Majota is going to move right now?
Yeah, so move.
And seconded by councillor Grow, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it, eight in favor, zero opposed.
Pause for one quick second?
Yes.
And just say, all we just did was move up in the book where the reserve numbers are going to be for future ordinances.
That is correct.
And so it's just moving numbers in the book? Just want to be clear.
And madam clerk, next to order business.
This public hearing 2024-012, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards, Commissions, Councils and Committees, Division Eighteen, Dogtown Preservation Commission by deleting in its entirety and adding a new section two dash five five nine point four to section two dash five five nine point nine, reserved.
Excellent, so I will open the public hearing? Ask if anybody's speaking in favor? Anybody speaking in opposition? Is there any communications?
There are none.
Questions from councillors? Seeing none, close the public hearing? And I'll call for the committee report.
Any recommendation on a motion by councillor Nolan, seconded by councillor Gray? The ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter Two, Administration, Article 5, Boards, Commissions, Councils, and Committees, Division 18, Dogtown and Preservation Commission, by deleting in its entirety and to add Sections 2 through 559.4 through 2 through 59.9 reserved, and I so move.
All righty. So it's been moved and seconded. Council Majota moved it, it's been seconded by Council Memhard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, eight in favor, zero opposed.
Any recommendation on a motion by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Majota, the ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. Recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester Court of Ordinances, Chapter 15, Parks and Recreation, by deleting Article 2, Stage Fort Park Advisory Committee in its entirety. And I so move.
Second.
So that was, that was moved by Council Majota and seconded by Councilor Gross. Is there any discussion?
Bro, Grace, who seconded it?
I just said nice flourish.
Oh, let's go with Grace then, second. Let's go with Grace. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, eight in favor, zero opposed. Next.
Committee recommendation on a motion by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Grace, the ordinance and administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. Recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester Court of Ordinances, Chapter 15, Parks and Recreation, Article 2, as follows. Delete Sections 15 through 18, add Sections 15 through 15 through 15 through 29 reserved, and I so move.
Second.
All right. So it was moved by Council Majota, seconded by Councilor Wirthly. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I was gonna, I was gonna comment, but.
You can comment.
I was just gonna say that if Council Majota ever gets tired of working at the open door, he can get a job at an auction house.
All those against?
Aye.
So the motion passes, eight in favor, zero opposed. Next up, Madam Clerk.
For council vote, sorry, public hearing 2023-054, City Council Order Number 2023-041, to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 21, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places by adding a new Article 5 entitled Petition for Alteration of Private Way.
All righty. So I will open this, and I'll continue this to the matter of March 12, 2024, the City Council meeting. Before we move on to the next mission, we have a lot of people that worked in our boards and commissions that have done a ton of work. They've served their purposes for the greater good of the city. The mayor's office has done a lot to look into how to streamline and make things work best for the city. But we're saying goodbye to a lot of people that did their part in a lot of different areas. And I'd like to start by saying that I'd really, really like to thank Dave Benjamin and Dave Dow for their work on the canons. I can go on, on others. I didn't know if anybody else on the council would like to thank people or add to them to what they've done for our city. We can start with Councilor Gilman.
So absolutely, Dave Dow is a rock star, as is Dave Benjamin. They've both been passionate. They've been in front of us for many, many years, lots and lots of meetings. I'm so impressed with their stamina, their enthusiasm. They've been terrific. And on Dogtown, I would like to give a shout out to the chair, Cindy Dunn. She's been an amazing chair. She is professional. She's prepared. She understands the issues at Dogtown. She works great with city staff. And I just can't say enough good things. And then how honored we are to have Chris Leahy, who's a 25, 30-year Mass Audubon guy that's been on Dogtown through many, many, many years and is totally, he's so good with all the issues in open space. And, you know, hopefully he'll be considered as one of the alternates for the new open space. So, and then Richard Quaitman, who's terrific. He's now already on the open space board. So he was on both. So that's nice continuity in Leslie Nicholson. So having served with them for the last many years, they're just great people. So thank you for allowing us to speak on their behalf, Council Nolan.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilwoman Gilman. Councilor Groh, would you like to add anything to any, any volunteers in the city? Council Grace?
You know, just thank you one and all. It's a, you know, huge commitment that people take on in already busy lives, and it is appreciated.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Council Wirthly?
Yes, thanks, Council Nolan. You're actually on the Stage Fort Advisory Committee.
I was.
You were, as of 8:45 tonight.
And Magnolia Woods.
Right, and Magnolia Woods, I was just gonna say that. So thank you for your service as well. I think that we all thank volunteers as much as we can. I think we all just continue to do that. And it's not just the people who are serving on these committees that just were dissolved, but people who've served over the decades. Magnolia Woods has been an issue that's been worked on for 30 years, Dogtown, Stage Fort. So it's hard to thank people retroactively, but I think that we should just continue the message that we appreciate our volunteers, and they've made a big difference. Thank you.
The Council Memhard.
I would just ditto that, and I agree 100%. And this is not to discourage folks from getting involved and advocating for out-of-doors in our backyards that they're concerned about. And I just, I think that the Open Space and Recreation Committee will be a platform for them to come together and have a place to speak and get some power behind them. But I just think of the Friends of Good Harbor Beach, and I think of the Save Salt Island, and the Clean the Creek Organization, and the East Gloucester School site development, and, you know, the care that goes on to the East Gloucester, the ponds, and Swinson's Field.
Save the Backshore.
Save the Backshore had its place and time. And, you know, they're just, there are endless numbers, and as residents, we tend to look in our own backyards. I think this is a wise move to bring it together, and I hope it gives greater strength to the efforts to manage and take care for these assets. And I hope also long-term that it leads towards a stronger beach and recreation department within our DPW that gets its own advocacy and funding so that, again, the Open Space and Recreation Committee can have some impact that is meaningful. And part of that means having access to staff and also having a budget to help prioritize where city resources are directed.
Thank you, Council Memhard. Council Benson.
I concur with my fellow councilors and also want to thank Councilwoman Gilman for your work, if I may, on your work on the Dogtown as well, and also your work that I just learned tonight being on the Magnolia Woods and Stage Fort. And to everyone who has volunteered, our city would not be able to run without volunteers. So I want to thank them all and also thank my fellow councilors for their work on boards and commissions. Thank you.
Council Majota?
I just ditto. He said it well there. Yes.
No auction?
No auction this one.
The next one.
All right. So basically, there's so many volunteers that we, that we were gonna miss and that have put their time in. And the bottom line is that the mission for all of these committees are still foremost, now front end of the Stage Fort Park. They have a lot of things that they're looking to do. The work that has been done in the past has been wonderful. Magnolia Woods is close to being a finished project with the DEP. We're still looking for a secondary gate to gain access for winter activities with parking, for snowshoeing, for cross-country skiing, for adventures with the dogs, and walking and hiking. So we're getting there. There's a lot of, a lot of things that aren't going away with these smaller committees being joined into a larger committee for the greater good. And like, again, ad hoc is something that is very, very real and can happen. And when something breaks off or an opportunity for something special in a certain area, they will do that. So next up, Madam Clerk.
Counselor's request to the mayor.
All righty. And we will start with Councilor Groh. Nice. And we'll then move on to Council Grace.
I just wanted to put out there that if some consideration would be given to drafting some sort of a guideline to the do's and don'ts of social media, you know, in oral communications tonight, it was kind of, you know, thrust out there that it does get somewhat contentious. And a lot of people, you know, whether it's us that are elected or people that are appointed to different boards and commissions, I think that, you know, going, you know, kind of getting into a discourse on social media that gets contentious and gets somewhat angry more often than not, does not shed a good light on the city. And I think that there should be guidelines about, you know, what is accepted, what's not accepted, you know, not to, to tap into, you know, free speech or anything. But with everything that's going forward with the TOD, it's only gonna get worse. We saw it during the election. It's already starting now on social media, and I really think that it's not effective. And there's never any point in time where anybody's gonna change somebody's mind by arguing with them on social media, ever. So anyway.
Thank you, Council Grace. Council Wirthly?
So I would agree, not that we're making a motion on this, but I would agree that we want to have some sort of policy, but you'd also don't want to eliminate, limit, no, sorry, you wouldn't want to limit city volunteers from their own free speech rights either because they're representing a board or commission. So it's a fine line, and I think the First Amendment is alive and well in Gloucester. And sometimes it can get a little heated, which is sometimes part of the process, right? So I agree, but it's gonna be a challenge to say, how do we tell city boards and commission members they can or can't say things and also respect their rights? So good luck to the mayor if he can honor that request in a way that's balanced. Good job running the meeting tonight, Council Nolan. I know that the mayor's out of town, and Mayor Anthony Gross, Anthony M. Gross, is in the back of the room. Thank you for participating in the meeting tonight. I do not have any, believe it or not, I do not have any requests of the mayor. What's that, Tony? I'm good. Thank you.
Council Memhard?
I have one item, and I have, in fact, already passed it on to the mayor's office and Pam Toby and Mike Hale. But just for the public's information, there are a lot of requests because we're getting this mild spring, early spring weather for the care and upkeep of our community playgrounds. Specifically, I've had constituents asking about the Abbott Street Playground. Everybody knows where that is, of course.
Abbott Road.
Abbott Road Playground behind the old Eastern Avenue School, AKA Para Research. And people play there regularly after the preschool program and it's going on there and things like that. But just a request to have the woodchips and the ground cover landscaped and up, spruced up. And again, the perennial issue of the safety of some of the playground equipment. But I was assured that that's all on the city's schedule for the spring term ahead.
Excellent. Thank you, Council Memhard. Council Benson?
I don't have anything at this time, but I would also concur with Councilor Grace specifically around what we're, what we just, what we've witnessed, and we condemn that type of, that type of violence, any type of rhetoric that is not conducive to civil discourse. And it's unacceptable. And as, as the Ward 2 City Council, I condemn that. And I would look, hope we can find some way to move forward on some sort of social media policy as we're seeing it not just here in Gloucester, but across the country, and it is not conducive to civil discourse. So thank you.
Council Majota?
I entered all my requests of the mayor's in. I just wanted to make it public, even though I did post it and it was shared, I will be having my Ward 4 meeting at the Lanesville Community Center at 6:30 tomorrow.
Councilwoman Gilman?
So I would like to let everybody know that the city does have a social media policy. So maybe we could get that shared. It doesn't necessarily mean that we as councilors are, are held to that, but it's a really good information. So maybe you could ask Suzanne Egan to, through, well, when our president comes back next week to send that around, and we could take a look at that. Oh, of course. Yeah. So, yes, so thank you. Thank you both for telling me that I should be asking Council President Nolan. Council President Nolan, if you would do that, I think it's helpful because it was sent around to all of us about two years ago, and there's good content. And also to remind everybody that our Rules of Procedure has a line item on social media in how we're to stick to factual information on posts. Well, absolutely. And I would like to say, I would like to say one more thing. A shout out to our sheriff's office. Kevin Popinger had told us over the years to call him. He's helped us with some of the quarry graffiti in the past. And I reached out to him, his office last week through, and I, and I let Mayor Verga know I was going to be doing that. And so today, we had a, and he, he put Sean Gallagher, who is the Director of Operations for Essex County, in charge. And today, we had five of our folks from Middleton doing tons of cleanup, all on 128 and our rotaries. And they collected 50 yellow bags, and they were all then coordinated with the state to, to clean them up or to pick up the yellows so that it happened really smoothly. And they're coming back the day after tomorrow for another day. So they really, they like coming to Gloucester, and I met them all this morning, and they were great. And we, we gave them a nice lunch, and they were really happy, and they're gonna come back the day after tomorrow. It's gonna rain tomorrow. So just nice partnership with the state and, and great help from the DPW. With, you know, we gave our yellows, we gave the pickers, and it was really a nice, a nice day. I spent some time with Tom Nolan hanging out this morning when we were waiting for the van to get there. He's a really nice guy. So anyway, I just want to say thank you.
Hold on. Councilor Groh?
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to, to say that the city said goodbye today to Barbara Schlichty, passed away a week and a half ago. Barbara was a Gloucester public school teacher for 25 years, also the parents, the mother and parent of eight Schlichty children, many of whom remain in Gloucester in various roles and, and really was a, was a huge part of Gloucester for many years. Her husband Miles served in the city council. Lovely ceremony. Most of us will be able to attend, and some of us will go attend. But just want to wish the family condolences on their loss, but grateful that Barbara was a part of our lives.
Thank you. She was a wonderful woman with a beautiful family. And again, also ties to two very important city volunteers.
Oh, yeah.
So with that being said, and me being last, I do want to say, we, we were talking about the social media and different things in letters going out to people we heard in oral comments. I don't want people thinking from home, listening or going back and watch tomorrow, that the letter that may or may not have been sent to the people from 20, about 20 Main Street was from a city or an official of the city. It was a letter that they claim that they have received. Our talk about other stuff was more social med, you know, media and responding to posts. So I didn't want anybody to get an idea that we're, we're trying to think that the letter that was sent to them was sent by someone from the city or from a board of the city because somehow it got a little, little confusion going back and forth on that. And other than that, I want to wish everybody a great night and drive safely, and thank you very much. And I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody.